Can you hear me okay in the room? Can anybody hear me?
Brian, can you hear us now?
They can't hear us, and we can't hear Brian, though. Can you hear us now, Brian? No, I hear myself, which is the worst.
Brian, are you muted?
Exactly, no, Manny. We just hear ourselves.
Yeah, but I think it's from the hallway.
We need to be able to hear. Here, Joe McCabe has his hand up. Joe, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Brian was on earlier. Is that Brian now? No, that's me.
This is Brian. Could you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you. Yeah, thanks, Joe. Thanks for helping, too. Okay. All right, so we're good. Mr. Irvin?
Mr. Lovett? Here.
Here. All right, all present. The recognition and ceremonial proclamations. We're going to move this one because there were people that wanted to come to accept it, and they can't make it tonight due to the rain and storms in Hazleton. So we'll just move it to next voting session. Do we have an adoption of the?
We want to move number seven to the letter.
Motion, do we have second?
Second.
Roll call on moving number seven.
Adopt the rest of the agenda.
Just roll call the number seven.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Durman? Yes. Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton?
I'm here. Could you hear me?
Yeah.
You vote to move the letters to the work session, Mr. Thornton?
The audio is really messed up.
Is it on his end?
I have a little bit better. Get him on the phone. At least get the audio. I mean, he's saying it's messed up.
Want to just do that?
I'm going to charge him by the minute, but.
Brian, I'm texting you a number to call.
Kevin, we're going to have him call the comments. By the minute.
It's okay for him, though.
That's like the California Psychics hotline.
You know what? We get a short agenda, and we have technical issues. We cannot get ourselves out of here before 9:30.
8:30, I was hoping to go at 7:30.
Yeah, I've had a fucking week.
Yeah, my vote over there.
That happened once.
Once.
Right, I told Brian to call this out. It's the blue thing moving. Should I call him?
There he is.
Hello?
Yeah, Kevin, it's Brian.
Oh, hey. All right, we got you. You're connected. You can hear me okay?
I can hear you fine now.
All right, good. You're on the conference phone, and I think the public can hear you as well. It's pretty loud. I can even make you louder. Okay. All right, so.
We're voting on to move the letters to the counties to the work session. Do you vote yes or no to do that, Mr. Thornton?
I vote yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin?
Yes. Mr. Lovett? Yes.
Miss Voe?
Yes, okay, so letters will be number four on the work session. All right, so do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Now we have public comment on voting session agenda items. I only have one slip, which is Mr. Griffin. Okay, anybody that would like to speak on agenda items? Mark Raivo's hand is up.
Madam Chair, this is Mark Raivo from Hazleton speaking. On agenda item number four for the multimodal funding, I hope that council informs the manager to tell the county engineer and the operations services division head, Mr. Kurtz, not to go out on their own in changing the scope of the parameters of the project or the funding without informing council or the manager, just as they've done with the federal DOT raise grant that was just awarded. Because I don't know if council was informed by Mr. Plesh or by Mr. Kurtz that they applied for two grant funding applications for the Pittston Bridges and not just one, as I stated last year during the budget meeting. So I hope that there's no mixed signals or miscommunication with any projects or requests moving forward. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Raivo. Any other members of the public with comments on voting session agenda items only? Are you hearing now to make a motion to approve the minutes for the June 30 meeting? On favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed? Minutes are adopted. Moving on to number one, motion to adopt resolution authorizing county manager to execute a renewal contract with Thompson Reuters for Westlaw Legal Research.
Motion second.
All right. Right.
Call them, Matt? Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Durman? Yes. Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Miss Voe?
Yes. Motion passes number two. Motion to adopt resolution authorizing county manager to execute a contract amendment extension with Geo Reentry Services. Some of them.
Second.
Roll call? Mr. Durman, Mr. Irvin?
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Miss Voe?
Yes. Motion passes number three. Motion to adopt resolution requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority.
Motion second.
Roll call?
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Miss Voe?
Yes. Number four, motion to adopt resolution authorizing an application to United States Department of Transportation for state streets and roads for all grant programs.
So move, Lovett. Second.
Mr. McDermott? Roll call? Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Miss Voe?
Yes. Number five, motion to adopt resolution depositing $260,845 into the reserve.
Motion, be like a slow.
Okay, I think it was Carl and McGinnley. The best friends, the best friends I've known ever.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Miss Voe?
Yes. Oh, all right. Number six, motion to adopt resolution awarding American Rescue Plan Act grant monies to the Greater Fitz and Chief of Commerce for Small Business Sustainability Grant Program.
Second, Mr. Mitchell.
Roll call? Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Absane. I think I had this one on my list of ones I wasn't supposed to.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Miss Voe?
Yes. Motion passes number seven. Let's move before we go into public comment. Attorney Skey, do you want to announce the executive session?
Yes. Today, we are in executive session. We will discuss the leash matters. One matter was to possibly resolve an employment matter. Another one was to discuss possibly resolve a matter with the sheriffs. Another case was a case where we discussed a possible resolution for a matter with the.
Thank you. Okay, we now have public comment on agenda items. Mr. Griffin?
Hello, council, our members of the public, Greg Griffin, Swarisville. I'd just like to ask anyone here at the council meeting, can you give the public the status of the $5 million, the ARP money that council had set aside for eligible citizens? Is there a status on that?
I can give you a status, but do you have any other comments before we respond?
Yeah.
Go ahead, you finish, and then I'll address it.
Okay. Well, we started with $112 million 18 months ago from Washington COVID money, American Rescue Plan money, $112 million. It went to organizations, authorities, land banks, nonprofits, businesses, and not a penny to an individual citizen. Now, Wilkes-Barre got the money and very quickly gave $300 to each household. So they got some cash in their hands. They needed money for utility bills. Luzerne County Council sat on the $112 million. Now, around Christmas, thankfully, all of you did vote $5 million to be set aside. And whether it was going to go to the CEO to commission an economic opportunity or partially some cash for eligible citizens, $300, $500. So around Christmas, you did that. So since Christmas now, the people have been in need, and y'all just sat on the money. And meanwhile, you did dole out $59 million to all these other organizations, land banks, and whatnot. Meanwhile, the $5 million sat there while retirees, disabled people, working parents, single parents could have used $300 to $500 for utility bills or whatnot. And the money still remains in one of the county banks gaining interest, $5 million. It's been approved by y'all. So the public wants to know, what's the status on the $5 million? When are you going to start deciding what to do with the $5 million? Thank you.
Sure. So actually, manager Kokomo took the initiative to reach out. So it was sitting, you know, after we voted on it, it was not moving for quite some time. She took the initiative. She reached out to CEO, and she actually has a proposal from them to spend the money for utilities and heating and things like that. That will come to council. But there was a discussion whether council wanted it to go towards an already existing program or directly to the people. So she's also gathering what it would take to get the money directly to qualifying citizens. So when we have that, we'll pair it with the CEO and have a discussion on which way council wants to spend it. But both of those options will be on the table. We were just waiting to have the other plan with how to bring that to council. If you want to add anything, you can, but.
No, that pretty much sums it up. We have the CEO keeping in the utility assistance project. But as a matter of fact, as I discussed with management today, management is going to give the information about organizations that can process if council decides to give residents a sum of money. There may be requirements. There will be a lot of technical issues that have to be covered. But my plan is to have that to council at one of the meetings in July.
Great. The CEOs, excellent, excellent organization. They do such great help.
They do great work.
To people, families, buildings, insulation. Ideally, if of the $5 million, and I think it was $5 million or more y'all voted on. So it does not necessarily $5 million. It could be $6. It could be $7, whatever the bank can handle. But ideally, $3 million to CEO, $2 million for cash for eligible people. I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Not all $5 million to CEO if you could help it. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. That's the only slip I have. Any other members?
I just follow up on that.
Sure, thanks.
I wasn't going to talk tonight. It was going to be a first. Elizabeth Hartman, Hanover Township. And just to follow up on that, the only problem I have with CEO is you have to follow under income guidelines. So there are some that really need the money that are not going to qualify because of CEO guidelines. CEO is a federal program. So that's my issue with that. And then late in the day today, WNEP broke a story that I'm sure you'll all hear about up in Lackawanna County who lost their children and youth license four days ago. They're down to provisional. Five workers were arrested for falsifying information up in Lackawanna County. I would love, I love the direction the county's going. I love our new county manager. I love the new director of children and youth. I'd like people to be held accountable in their jobs. If you're working for the county, you need to be held accountable for your job. If you're not held accountable for your job, get the heck out of here and get someone in that will do the job better than they can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Any other members that are here, sure.
Hi, Jamie Walsh from Ross Township. Last month, I asked about the $1.8 million for Sweet Valley Road. And the day after, I talked to Mr. Kurtz. He was great afterwards. Our roads, and Mr. Kurtz, this is no reflection on you because you're only a couple of years in the position. This is long before you came on. Our roads out there are disgrace. They're a disgrace. They've been patched so many times. They're falling apart. From what I understand, it was approved here, but the money wasn't released or the project wasn't released. I don't know the process. I'm not pretending to know the process. But I called our township supervisor the next morning. I asked him to send a message so we could locally see what the scope of work is intended to be out there because we cannot deal with another cheap project out there. Like, these roads are... So my township supervisor has a lot of questions, like, number one, to start with the scope of work. Now, as of Friday, I know he hasn't received that yet. I don't know what that process is. And maybe, I know you're new, too, so, or back again, or whatever.
We need the engineers tomorrow.
But we would like to see the scope of work prior to anything being done out there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other members that are here? Sure. Ms. McKiddish?
Michelle McKiddish, Jenkins Township. Just wanted to say thank you on behalf of all of the Luzerne County Chambers, Wyoming Valley, Hazleton, Pittston, myself. We really appreciate you pushing this resolution through this evening so that we can really get forward and get into the nuts and bolts of bringing the program together. We are ready. We've been putting the groundwork together. So now we just need to get some pieces of the puzzle together. And hopefully, within 60, 90 days, we'll be able to really be helping those small businesses. So we appreciate what you've done so far and looking forward to really working with everybody and moving the whole project forward. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you to you guys as well. Any other members of the public that are here? All right, if not, we have Mr. Raivo's hand up on the Zoom.
Madam Chair, this is Mark Raivo from Hazleton again. I'd like to, first of all, echo what was said about people in the employees of the county government that are not performing. They should perform and be held accountable. If they're performing well, they should stay. If they're not, then they should find another line of work. Also, I want to ask the council if they heard anything from the Office of Law or the county engineer with regards to the memorandum of understanding with respect to the LSA infrastructure loan, considering the fact that one of the banks that took themselves out of the process is now back on in the agreement, the MOU agreement. So I'm hoping that either the Office of Law and also we're waiting for the redevelopment authority solicitor to get back with that, for their legal opinion on that issue. Also, I'd like to know, Madam Chair, if you could ask, I know that the Duke County manager wasn't aware prior to last, for last year's budget, but the raise grant, the federal DOT grant that I raised earlier, was not applied for because Mr. Plesh stated, and I quote, Luzerne County would be in competition with itself if it applied for a separate raise grant for the Nanicoke and West Nanicoke Bridge. So I would like to ask council and, well, not the new manager because she wasn't here last year during the budget. But I would like to ask members of, any member of council if they were made aware that Mr. Plesh applied for a second federal DOT grant for the Pittston, for the second Pittston Bridge. Because that way, because I asked during last year's budget, why wasn't it applied, why wasn't a second grant applied for for the West Nanicoke and Nanicoke Bridges? That would relieve the LSA infrastructure money for the county roads. So I would like to know the answer to that question. I'm sure the public would, especially those residents that have county roads that are deteriorating, and they would like their roads paved. And as far as the Hazleton issue, I just want to make council aware that there's two, there's a dedicated bus for each bus route for Carbon and Schuylkill County. So there are two buses. So I would ask council to include language to pay for the maintenance for those buses as well as for the bus routes themselves. And is the auditor for Hazleton Transit still there? Because, as you know, he was convicted of taking from a nonprofit, and his plea agreement was not to serve in any capacity as an auditor or accountant for a nonprofit. So if you can answer questions, Madam Chair, I'd appreciate if you'd answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raivo. To a majority of your questions, I do not have the answers. But for certain, with the grant issue, we can look into that and get it back to you. I don't know the answers to your questions off the top of my head. I apologize.
I remember that conversation. And he did state at that time that wasn't would be in competition with ours.
I vaguely remember the conversation, but what happened after that, I don't, I didn't know that it was.
We'll look into it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get back to you, Mr. Raivo. Thank you. Any other members in the public? On favor? Abstentions? Oppose? Is it okay? Keep that on? All right, it's 6:40. We'll have a work session to order. We're into the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. We have a roll call, please.
President?
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Mr. Durman? Here. Mr. McGinnley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Irvin?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Voe? Miss Voe?
The addition is number four will be the letters. Anything else? On favor?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed? Agenda is adopted. Number one, receiving discussed budget report for May 2023. Mr. Spence?
Thank you, Chair Raivo. Careful, sorry. Have it, have it, I'm sorry. So in your packet is everything related to the May budget report. The top priority, as everyone knows, is the county audit at this time. Everyone's aware of the deadline, and we're working towards that. For the next packet, you'll have June. You'll have some more information. And then usually, in the beginning of August, we'll have updated information for mid-year as we close mid-year. So right now, the priority is the audit. I will take any questions. You can email me as always, and I have the information in front of me. But an email is fine, and I'll get back to anyone on council. Thank you.
The election integrity grant?
Yes, sir.
I think it all has to be what allocators spent by the end of this month.
Correct. Yes, June 30.
Am I going to be able to spend it all?
Last I checked, there was less than $200,000, so we will be able to spend it all. And we will have a file. We know the deadline for that as well.
And are we, like you and I, as a test, are we going to be looking at possible resolutions as far as transferring money out of the grant to back to salary line items to those departments?
Yeah, I don't know that right off the top of my head.
Yeah, we have to go through the grant and the monies, and then I. Mr. Spence?
Mr. Lewis Gavin, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you what was left, which you already answered because with the topic of the election polls coming up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Spence.
All right, thank you.
Number two, discussion regarding resolution authorizing county manager to execute lease agreement amendment between Luzerne and Wyoming Counties, Area Agency, Aging, and Freeland Northside Area Senior Citizen Service Association for an active adult center located at 701 Chestnut Street, Freeland, PA, 18224.
Manager Kokomo? Tim Farrell was supposed to be online to discuss this. Okay, Tim?
Hi, it's Tim from Aging. Aging is requesting to have an amendment approved for the Freeland Active Adult Center location. Center's been in that location since 1980, providing meals, exercises, classes, and an opportunity to socialize for the seniors in the community. So we'd just like to have that renewed for a few more years.
On the question, that has nothing to do with the county funding, or that's all state funded?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Thank you.
Council, any questions? All right, we'll move on. Number three, discussion regarding resolution requiring municipalities and government entities to pass an appropriate resolution prior to making funding requests to Luzerne County. This is just the resolution in response to the discussion we had when Hazleton Transit came for the match. And we would like them to have something from Hazleton Council telling us that, you know, they're seeking the match. So that's in response to that. Does anybody have any questions in regards to that? Very great. Moving on to number four, the letter. I know we had edits to make to it. So you all got a handout. Things that I need filled in first off is for the past blank years, I was trying to research how long we've been doing it. Maybe Mr. McGinnley knows. Maybe you'll find out or share. How long have we?
Because I've been here a long time.
You're a wealth of knowledge.
You got to realize what's all the time. So it's long before home rule.
We can always say for many years.
I might say many, many.
You might know, Steve.
And then I know another thing that we were talking about with this is percentage-wise. I think we should break the letter into two. I think we should break the letter into two and send one letter to Carbon and one to Schuylkill. And we could, we could put the percentage in that way. Do we want to, do we want to break it down into ridership? Do we just want to ask for a block fee? Originally, when I wrote the letter, I asked for any amount that they can contribute would be helpful because we've been contributing 100% of it forever. So honestly, even if they wanted to give four or five percent, anything would help. But just feedback.
My consensus simply is, like you said, the letter going to the chairman of each of the respective counties. That's definitely, within that letter, I think we should ask for exact amounts that we paid out of our, to the allotment, to the match. For example, Schuylkill is $3,751.47. That would be specific to school. Carbon, $18,548.94. That's what we pay. We're paying that. So they should know exactly how much they should contribute. The second thing I think we should have, we should have the ridership attached to it. And not only the ridership, we should have exactly the routes that is traveled going into Luzern to Carbon, to Luzern to Schuylkill. So they'll have this in their pack. Also, I think we should have a copy sent to Senator Argle and a copy to Representative Batro. They cover both those districts. I just, I don't want to have anything, any stone unturned because they should have all the information that they need to make a decision on what we will provide for all these years. At the least, we should do it. I mean, anybody else have any, any other ideas that we should incorporate into this letter?
Can I make sure that I wrote everything down? You think we should CC their legislators? You think we should attach the ridership numbers, which we have from?
We have them in the chart. We don't have the routes, but we'll get that.
Yeah, we'll get the routes from Sharp, okay? And then the exact amounts for what we've been contributing on behalf of Carbon and Schuylkill.
At least for this year, and every year is a little bit different.
Yeah, sure.
This is going forward.
All right, yeah. Most of it we have from Mr. Sharp, but I'll try to get more.
So we're on the subject.
Hold on, hold on one second, Mr. Thor, Mr. Lo Scavitch just started talking.
On Monday, I was coming to Hazleton, actually, and I saw an LCTA shared rider bus. I was just curious if I could cover that area.
Hold on. Mr. Thor, can you mute your Zoom because we're echoing microphones? Sorry.
So, so weird.
Thank you.
So my question is, do we run that all the way down to Hazleton? That little bus, you know, the shared rides?
I think share ride goes down. I mean, we're not, we don't oversee LCTA, but I can find out the route stack going to.
Yeah, I'm just curious because that short, the smaller version bus to leave from 44 to go all the way down Hazleton, they're there. Couldn't we maybe work out a deal with them to take one or two of those and operate out of? It seems like a lot of time and effort traveling back and forth that when I saw it, there was no one.
There's a lot of opportunities.
Yeah. So the shared ride program used to be a separate program.
It is.
Towards the pressure days, it dissolved it with LCTA. But a shared ride program, the medical appointments, things of that nature. It's not really public transit kind of issues. So we've always sort of resolved. We know that the new terminal being built here in Woodford will probably allow for those vehicles to be over here. That's the plan. Instead of having vehicles up at 44 Airport and then the LCTA down in Nudersville. So that's probably going to make it a little bit better.
Well, this wasn't Edward result, this was Hazleton.
Right, but they came out of 44 as yet.
Yeah, so my, my question is, maybe if we speak with them, maybe we can come to an agreement to leave. I don't know, to bring them down there and have them operate with some kind of agreement. There's a lot of miles back and forth on any one, right? To go down there, take somebody in Hazleton somewhere and then drive all the way back at dead edge for nothing. It doesn't seem like, what if, what I'm saying is, if you were all in business, we would never do that. So there's probably a better way to do it.
Vice Chair Lombardo and I, sorry, a few years ago, not a few years ago, maybe last year, we tried to convene a meeting between LCTA and Hazleton Transit to see if we can get them to like cohesively. And it kind of just disintegrated, the meeting never happened. But maybe if we could get, like, pressure that a little bit, because I think it could be a good partnership, at least to just talk about it and if, you know, give it a shot. And I know it's really not our jurisdiction to make them. But I mean, if we could just be a level playing field to get them together, then.
Even if we got a little bit of that out of it.
We could use that as an example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a perfect example.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd want to help with that.
Very much like to.
Great, good. All right, so we'll work on that, for sure. And then for this letter, we'll look to include everything that Mr. Perry would like to see added. Attorney, will your office help? And we'll get that together. We'll get it out before the next meeting. This way, we don't need, we could, if anybody has any edits, once we update it, let's try to do it so that we can vote on it next meeting and just get it out. All right.
Mr. Vogt?
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Thor, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to echo and say, I agree, article said with what Mr. Perry said with the letter and CCing the state rest and senators is a great idea. I also want to say that just as when the state gives us grant money to the county, our books have to be open to them and they audit us later on. And, and they have to be able to see where we're spending all our money because we're receiving federal taxpayer money, even state taxpayer money when it comes our way. I hope that our controller, Mr. Griffith, is, has been able to access audits of the Hazleton Transit company. We're giving them money every single year for many years. And it's very important because that's the taxpayer money we're giving them, that he be allowed to perform audits as he sees fit with the Hazleton Transit company. I was also wondering, has he been doing audits of the Transit company?
Mr. Thor, and unless he's, oh, he's on the Zoom. Walter's on the Zoom. I didn't see him. I was going to say it's the one meeting. I don't see him here.
Okay, I think that's important, though.
Sure. And that's the end of the, that's the end of the work session. So we'll see. Controller Griffith, are you on? Did you want to just?
Yeah, I am on. Thanks, Madam Chair, I appreciate that. And I will certainly take Councilman Thornton's recommendation under advisement. I, I did consider this, but I just didn't know what the scope I would have because that's a city-run organization and whether they would allow me to look that, look into that. But I certainly will have my office take a look at it and we'll, we'll go from there and see if they'll allow us to look at the funding and check their, their financial status and get their audits reports as well. I'll be glad to do that.
Thank you. All right, we now have public comments. Any members of the public that wish to speak that are here?
Just as Walter Bond. I didn't see him, so I wasn't going to say anything. But I'd like to commend him on his work with the election fines and working with the election office to get that done. I think we haven't done that in a long time. It's money in our coffers and no matter how we get it, it's money in the coffers. And they should be held accountable. If they're running for something and they don't know the rules for it, they need to find out what the rules are or pay the fines. So thank you, Walter, for doing your job. It's much appreciated.
Thanks, Ms. Hartman. Any other members, Mr. Griffin?
Greg Griffin, Swarazil. In a paper the other day, there was mention of county looking into reassessment. Bad idea. Very bad idea, especially for y'all who think we're trying to get reelected. The people are struggling. The property taxes are too high now. School taxes, county property taxes. Our past manager, Romilda, I think she, she made a comment in the paper year, a year ago that she, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I think she said, you said that reassessment was a viable idea because property values went up and it may be time to get some more revenue. And now, the other day in a paper, it was mentioned again about reassessment and someone's in the article says property values are starting to drop. So maybe we should have reassessment then. But you know what? It costs millions to reassess and the people get hurt. We need more efficient government, more efficient county government, consolidation of departments, less county employees if possible, modernization of computer systems and whatnot. We can't keep going to the well of the people, reassessing, increasing property taxes. We did have a county property tax and that, that would be very bad politically for anyone seeking reelection. Another county property tax. We already had one councilman who was just defeated because he voted for county property tax. So the people are fed up. They don't have any more money. They're struggling. Reassessment, very, very bad idea for you council members who have common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members in the public that are here? All right, if not, Mr. Raybo?
Madam Chair, Mark Raybo, Hazleton. I would like to ask in the county council and the county manager to please lobby our state legislators for the increase in the reimbursements for the court funding. They are voting, the state legislators will be voting on the state budget the end of this week. And I hope that all of you take the time to reach out to our state legislators to urge them to increase the reimbursement since they increased the COLA, the cost of living increase for the court staff employees by 5.6% in 2021. Now, the 2022 budget that was, or 2022, when the 2023 budget was passed, you guys used the ARP money for, for, to cover that cost. But for year, for next year's budget for 2024, that's not going to happen. So you're looking at a 5.6% shortfall for court fund, court staff funding for salaries. So I hope that you take the time and consideration to reach out to our legislators for that reimburse, for the increased reimbursement. Also, with regards to the, to the funding for our county roads and bridges, I hope that you also reach out to them for usage of the, the state ARP money because as I sent to you, all of you in your emails about the state not spending all of their ARP money because some projects fell through, I think that needs to be also addressed. And to answer Mr. Lo Scavitch's question about the, the transportation for Hazleton, they do have a regional airport, the terminal that's about finished. I believe the county manager and Mr. Perry were there for the groundbreaking a year and a half, two years ago, and it's almost complete. So if you want to go follow through with that idea that Mr. Lo Scavitch has, I think the terminal at the Hazleton Regional Airport can be used since they're going to have even pumping stations there too for the, for the buses. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Any other members of the public?
Yes. Madam Chair.
Wait, somebody's.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say it's seven o'clock. Kudos to council. You got both sessions done in an hour. I don't think I've ever seen that happen before, but thank, thank you to the chair for moving that along. My other, my other point is the election integrity grant runs out at the end of the month. Hopefully council will get the reimbursement back to the, from the general fund, back into the reserve account. And so that they will be able to use it to bolster spots, spots of the budget that need bolstering, like the Office of Law who's over, over budget currently and could use a, a shot in the arm for lack of a better term. I think that money would come in very handy to help that department. And council can do that with that additional money from the election integrity grant. On Ms. Hartman's comment about the campaign finance reports, I just want to say kudos to the new manager and to the Bureau who cooperated fully to get that done. I mean, this was, this was a very heavy lift for everybody involved. The manager came in and asked to have it done and I thought we'd never get this thing anywhere close to where it is currently in two weeks. So kudos to the manager and to the staff of the Bureau of Elections for doing the work to get the data together, to get it up online, to get the campaign finance reports out there. So we have a record of who's filing and who's not. So thank you to the manager. Thank you to the administration for their help. And again, it's seven o'clock. Congratulations. I'm done.
Thank you. Guys, really quickly, oh, sorry.
Can I just say what my quote was to Mr. Griffin, just so that everybody's clear? What I said was that I would work with the assessor's office to closely monitor sales and establish whether the rising prices are more than a trend. Said the market may readjust and I will keep council informed, which is similar to what I said today because I think that the residents and council will want to carry manager and the assessor's office to monitor the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Pokemong. Really quickly, on a much lighter note, and I will announce it again in July. Just so everybody's aware, July 14th, 21st and 28th are, is the Rock and the River Series. So if you guys can stop by on Friday nights in July, it's usually really fun. So try to stop by if you can and weather. Thanks, guys.
Second, there's a little more lobby.
Wait, do we have a second?
Yeah.
On favor?
She wasn't even waiting for a second.
Vice Chairman, so why did you decide to abstain on that motion?
I had the Pittston Chamber down at one of the organizations that I had.
Okay, all right, very good. Now, it said in that, on the agenda, it said something about.